Okay, welcome table second. Twenty twenty four, we need the whole meeting, it's now six oh four. We're calling meetings ordered. And we have second item is the adoption of the agenda to have an open.
No movement.
Of speaking. Any adjustments, edits?
No.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed, carried. Okay, public participation. Anyone in the gallery would like to speak?
Oh.
Okay, anyone online?
We don't have any.
Okay. We'll move to the next item, which is unfinished business. And. That would be item four A. There. To do the power. It's a tower. Okay, page two, unfinished business. That. Uh, Joe, anything you'd like add? Unfinished business. Page two.
Um. No changes from the budget from operating budget from the last presentations. Current ones. So there's a couple of slides discussing clothes. If I make that. There's not. Like what was it? Any kind of question?
Okay, we don't have a closed item on the agenda. Okay. There wasn't, that wasn't anticipated. Sorry, we didn't have a closed anticipated for this meeting. Or Joe, you just mentioned closed item?
If I could, yeah, so this is something that we discussed this afternoon about how best to issue. And it was felt that taking the inventory closes. From the place. Take it. Sort of sort of. Just apply. Which is. Okay. Who would discuss? Joe.
Okay, we don't have it on the agenda. We didn't add it to the agenda. Did, is this something you want us to add? But we'd have to do it near the end, I think, because we've got some people in the gallery that the, you know, want to ask them to go up that range and come back in. You can flatten the budget towards again and then report it.
Hmm.
Oh, so at the end of the meeting, subject to council wishing to entertain that closed portion of me.
So just the. By the way, is it part of the whole budget discussion? But so this is on form of discussion. Moving forward. Over.
Okay. Good enough.
Okay, so it's a stacking of the issue for on the budget, on individuals. Right. Alright.
Okay. Uh, alright, we'll move right to, uh. What's your chair call? Anything you want to add before we? Don't enter that.
Um, nothing further I can start going into details.
Okay, over to you.
So, um, on schedule eight, page three, this represents the, um, operating, uh, capital budgets that have been discussed in our period meetings. And it represents a proper taxation increase of. Six percent. And the base plan for twenty twenty four. And the various taxes, uh, jelly three, it's the five of that. Um, nothing has changed from our previous meeting. And I guess that just laid out the goal for this meeting. Um, I've seen. Through the whole asset approval of the budget as presented. Uh, for moving forward to presentation to the council. Uh, for approval if they are in that meeting. Uh.
So. Can I ask one question, Joe? So. The. The budget that we're looking at now. Is a budget as of a certain date. Right?
Yes.
It's not current budget. The forecast elements of it are not updated from a certain date. What is that date? Is it January or what is it? The obvious thing that comes to mind is, you know, you told us before we have an audit, but it's gonna be, it's one of the many items. It's gonna be considered more, you said, happy twenty thousand, still show a sixty four. So it's not. It's not as we understand things now, but is it as we understand things of a certain date? And I'm used to you saying financial state, but this is financial state, and as I, and there's a line in the sand. Does this have a line in the sand or?
We don't have a line in the sand. Um, the auditors are scheduled to present their findings and presumably their final billing at the, uh, our next meeting of the council. Um, at that time, we can incorporate into twenty twenty four what the average would be. Um, or draw on our reserve for twenty twenty.
So you. So, given there's audits, I'm sure there's other items that come to mind, that was the obvious one. Are we gonna go back and then have a revised version of this? Or is this what we're gonna sign off?
Uh, I will be revised, uh, and there will be some items that, um, regard to make our matters and. But um, uh, and another item that I was bringing up, uh. Uh, as we go through this package, uh, that's implied that we're, uh, need with our emergency job.
Yeah, I, I, one last question before we go over the schedule. Um. The difference between twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, and August, the five year plan. Um, and the, and the, when the read jumps out is the public works. So public works last year was a million and change. This year it's one point one. But now next year we, we suggest, and for the four years afterwards, it's going back down. By five hundred thousand dollars, back to the numbers it used to be. Two or four years ago. Is that, is that realistic?
I can, uh, go through that, um, in the public work section when we get to there.
Sure.
To the five year plan. Um, I may have to refer to my more detailed notes on it. The better by capillating, there's been a five point. Primarily with this much percentage of focus on twenty twenty four. But then I can go back to, um. And. Why it would. Five. About that.
Okay, so the only questions I'm going to. They're good.
Yeah, that's the bottom. Thank you. Um.
So this one, before you, if you've seen a lot of these numbers, the whole tonight is, there's a couple of things that we did. Alright. Uh, to set up stage for, sort of really seeing what these things. If you got count them, yeah. You may or may not be, uh, have a comfort level. Sort of moving up to a bylaw. But I just want to point out that they fifteen, which is dead by the time. So we sort of have to make sure that we are. Next, yeah. On almost as quickly as we can before. Uh, with regard to the five year plan. Um, that is simply, uh, the, the best guess as it stands today. I can, I would tell you that those things in my experience have never. Hundred percent likely. For a lot of these. Um. Still, some of the, the most obvious key plays holders are, are accommodated in that plan. Paul and Joe have been working quite carefully if you're going to figuring out how to test possibly that. On their plan. Uh, but it's not gonna be. Be called to the degree that, uh. On a rotating basis from year to year. Yeah, it shifts to the, to what in that. Plan as a year. The following year for the coming year comes forward, you know what I mean? Uh, so. The five year plan doesn't have to, if not, can't necessarily be perfectly accurate or perfectly exhaustive. Um, to manage it, sorry, after about five, well, pieces. Knowing that a linear basis of each year matures, it can be a deeper dive and add-ons and some.
So can, can I raise a question here? I've got the same concern about the drop. In the public works budget, I mean, that's a significant drop. I, I, I look forward to hearing about that. And then I'd also like to understand this, uh. On the schedule, this business, but they transfer from reserves. It looks like we're transferring from reserves. Every year, so what's the plan there? Um, in terms of exhausting our reserves. Replenishing them. I'm trying to understand that line.
Alright, yeah, sure. So I'll get into that, um, as we look at the five year plan for capital expenditures, primarily the draw on reserve to fund, uh, expenditures. Through the five year plan and with the proposed tax rate increases, it's not enough to cover, um, hundred percent. Meaning from taxation to cover those. Planned expenditures. Um, I, uh, but I will get into that in detail when we get into.
Hmm.
Okay. In line.
With that. Uh, in terms of twenty twenty four, the taxation is at one point nine four or five million.
Yeah.
Um, now you mentioned it was a six percent. Based on six percent. Um, that's actually the number for nine percent, I believe. Um, so are the assumptions here from twenty four to twenty five, twenty six, twenty twenty seven and so on, so that a six percent increase year over year or? I'm just wondering what the, what the assumptions are in terms of the tax increase year over year. Uh, the assumption. Oh. Next. First number is incorrect, I believe. Um.
I will tap back for you, um, I find a, uh, we're put on table was the nine percent. One point nine million, but yes, I, I can no check that for you. Uh, as presented though, the current, the base is that presented and what have the. Well, we just got the recommended approach.
Well, so revenue on page nine is showing the nine twenty four budget, one point eight nine one, which is six percent. So it's just on, just on the schedule A. The five year plan that it's showing it at the one point nine. Million. So. From page three. And page, uh. Nine. And my last prefer to I was evil, but then.
Oh, oh, yeah, correct, yes, uh, so yeah, that, so the, 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 the light showed that, um, the one point nine, uh, five million, which would have been nine percent, which was going to, uh, recommend. Going forward.
Okay, well, yeah, I have some difficulty with that, but, okay, so the budget number in, on page nine is at six percent. And then.
Summary is the, uh, recommended.
On page. Three is at nine percent. Now, what is the assumption going from twenty, twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five? Is that, is that a six percent increase year over year or?
Could be, um, that schedule that you're looking at?
Yeah.
Be, uh, nine percent each year.
Nine percent each year?
Yeah, that's, that's for upper discussion, um.
Yeah.
They're good. Spike on.
Just so that doesn't hang out there like a pregnant buzz. Yeah, uh, this nine percent is driven by something. Uh, it's not random, it's not too high, but in order to move us toward financial sustainability, there are some real costs this year. We're doing. And it's better to do it incrementally, I would suggest, than having big surprises every few years, uh, maybe more. And so, um. Joe will walk you through how he's landed on nine percent. It's not an exact number, it's, it's sort of a median approach to. Kind of find a balance between excessive taxing into fund what's coming down the bike and to live the fact.
So around about five percent after two thousand and four, it's not nine, doesn't carry on in nine.
Of thousand five.
About seven to five, three million. Yeah, fiveish.
So basically it's five. Recognizing that, that, it's a. An estimate, but however, I just. Wanting to figure out what the assumptions are, okay?
So is it five or is it nine?
But, uh, so you could go to a page step, um, that would just wanna show you, uh, where the tax rate, uh, the very bottom there. So that in this scenario, this shows, um, what the capital study proven problems are, yeah, six percent, I propose nine percent, or I recommend, uh, nine percent. And then the following years are five percent, we sent you that.
So where's the nine percent coming from?
Uh, the nine, so the nine percent, uh, tax increase based on, um, what the. Terrible communities that are loaded. Um, what, um, would be prudent, uh, to start, uh. Uh, saving for, and for future capital expenditures, uh, and emergent issues that may be coming up. Um, it's, uh. Effectively, uh, also an increased number to reflect the, uh, the. Living inflation cost, budgetary cost that we have. Um, currently, um, the, uh, plan proposal is nine percent in twenty twenty four. Five, three, 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 with the expectation that inflation, uh, will be reduced. Uh, that is a number that can be revisited each year as we determine what the, uh, if the needs are. Um, and what the capital comfortable with, uh, or drive out of it, for sure. Those numbers do not, um, uh, get us to a zero draw from reserves. You know, driving on reserve each year with those, uh, both gradient pieces. Uh, but we're seeking a balance between, um, the, uh. A rate increase that can be obtained, um, by the taxpayer. Um, that's been pretty high and then visiting our U B tier, um, uh, just in that way. The, um, when I did some of the calculus, and then I mentioned this before, uh, for us, and then at the very bottom, you can see, um, of that page six. Uh, you know, get to a net zero with, um, uh, rate increase, like the army tax purchase, this is a fun plan. Um, capital expenditures each year. Um, you'd be getting into like forty three. We're not, that's not acceptable for active. Um, and, uh, there, it's not really reflective of what you have, what we plan on doing. What we. You know, and we've had, uh, uh, some. So. Where the recommendation is, is that we talk, which is in twenty twenty four, which is, um. Consistent with municipalities, uh, throughout the region. Um, it's, uh, absolutely more, uh. Reduces the draw on. First of all, if you have felt that enough then. Um, and then we revisit that, uh, that reading. And by the. Obviously, here.
On page. Eleven. Uh, you've got a comparison of the different municipalities, uh, which goes anywhere from seven point six to. Looks like nine point five percent. Um. Do any of those municipalities have a ten percent infrastructure surcharge?
Um, there are infrastructure surcharges, um, I can, uh, get you the exact numbers for those, but that is, uh, a common, um, item that I've.
Okay, it'd be very interesting to see what, what those are because. We are building in a, a ten percent. Well, I'm assuming. That, um, there's a line item that includes a ten percent infrastructure surcharge. And, um. My understanding would, would be that we're, we're voting to accept that or not to accept that, so it's optional. So if it were not there, um. That's what one. But if it is there, that's the ten percent surcharge on taxes and then an additional either six percent or nine percent. So effectively, you know, the tax rate could be. You know, considerably less than, than, than being recommended here. It's in. So the ten percent center, yeah.
Yeah, just to correct you, Michael, um, and the C E O can maybe make us a takeaway. The last council agreed to charge a ten percent structural levy year on year. Um, and it was a resolution to that effect.
Year on year.
Yeah, year on year, ten percent was not, it's not something that we revisit at the budget. It is ten percent, unless you wanna go back and challenge that resolution and remove it. Okay, it's not, the budget discussions around whether six or nine on the other line, it's ten percent is fixed.
Yeah, but it is, but it is a ten percent tax surcharge. Built in.
Yeah. Liv. Back of the wheel too, which. Right? Well, we call it a levy, but for lack of a.
Levy, yeah.
Okay, I'd just be interested, I'd be interested to know what the other municipalities, we're going to compare those, that I think we should also be considering.
I, I would suggest you will not find apples and apples very easy. The sound and pay for it, and then all kinds of different ones, you won't see another number that jumps up.
We'll seek some comparison, yeah.
So on. Um. Four, um, I'd just like, uh, as, uh, noted at the beginning of the meeting, uh, just to, um. Obtain, uh, many use, uh, asset approval of the previously discussed, uh, capital expenditures for twenty twenty four. Um, this, uh, schedule incorporates comments from this committee of the whole meeting. Um, if there is anything, um, that, uh, in particular, um, part, uh, of this discussion, please let me know, but from what I understand, these are what have been, um. Approved, uh, tentatively by the people.
Yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna discuss these line by line, we just wanna comment from the.
Uh, nothing has changed in this respect, so, um, if there are no specific items that, that you'd like to address, um, I suppose we would move on, uh. Recommended, uh, uh, capital expenditure for twenty twenty four.
So we, we've seen this before.
Yeah, there's nothing.
As it is, and this is what we recommend.
Why don't we open up for questions? We've looked at.
Okay, so don't we discuss it in the list, I'll leave it in the next, look to the next one, but okay.
Counselor, any questions?
Um. Well, the, the hundred thousand dollar walk, what a contingency jumps out at me. And it's previously budgeted, not spent. Okay. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I made a problem, so that was a purely budget, budgeted at act one, um, so that was, uh, at, from our last meeting, um. Uh, what did the, the discussion was, um, down with thousand dollars, we just started sitting in reserves, we used to fund surveys or studies. For, um, water related projects. Um, infrastructure project. Then once there was, um, certainty as to what product you'd be, um, addressed. Or prioritize, then we would tap into, uh, nine hundred thousand dollar water contingency that had been deferred. Um, the decision was made that the nine hundred thousand dollars in water contingency additionally. Would be deferred in some time, had we had a plan for a prioritization of what product we would be giving off.
Yeah, there are a hundred thousand, I think it wasn't called water contingency for that, it's probably gonna confuse me, but. Um, so can I, it probably works, that is your question? Um. We, we are still convinced we are gonna need to use some sort of water project, and there's various options of what is gonna be. The most needed, the prior to the summer, we intend to do something. You prepare a leak or get a further water supply from Alberta, something along those lines, correct?
Uh, yeah, that's correct, you, the chairs go, the hundred thousand, uh, it pretty much came out ready for the necessary reviews and studies.
There's a.
Specifically, uh, there's, it's three, uh, council aware, but I'll remind you of them. Uh, the first is highway tank remediation, which includes a needed domain that may be, uh, of, for significantly hit. Uh, second is redirecting the Alberta intake, there's, there's three separate aspects to that. The first is quite expensive, uh, put it this way, the nine hundred thousand contingency would cover it. And then including a package plant up there with power, uh, to feed directly into existing main network feed. What used to be the old base fire of line phase, so it's staying on the path of life, but, uh, that would utilize current Alberta flows. Um. A, a second option on Alberta is to pipe the raw water to the Harvey intake. Why would we go there? Because it's concrete, pretty much flat all the way. And the third option there is pipe the water, the Harvey plant. Getting it into, uh, the, the, the intake of the Harvey plant and raw water, uh, let's not forget that, uh, would take quite a bit of work. Um, engineers actually, it's gonna be spending four hours here on Thursday to get that. Um. And the, uh, the third option is. It's, it's not a water. Savings and not a water, uh, adding project, it's redoing mag intake. That is not on critical part, but. Again, you know, we, we asked for budget for that, uh.
It's also on the deference, that's also on the purpose.
So, but, so those are the contingency projects, uh, I don't have numbers on them yet. People know that they need to be working fast. Um, the proposition is that nine hundred is currently part, and if we do need it or more, gonna have to come back to council for a review.
Yeah, so that was, that was my question, I guess made for a slight difference. What do you think the chances are, is we're not gonna do any of those, and we're not gonna use any of the nine hundred thousand this year?
Johnsons, I, I, I don't know, um, because we don't even quantify them in terms of what is saving for water addition. Um, the one that may be the, this.
So there is, so there is a chance you suggest we will do nothing. What, what I'm getting to is if we know we are gonna be budgeting something for this year, why are we saying bring zero in now, coming back in a month's time? Why aren't we taking our best guess at it now?
That's what I was, uh, crying into my pillow on, once you there, so. Yes, uh, it's possible we won't need it. Possible we're gonna need more.
Okay.
They could. Yeah, it's about.
There's nothing, there's two options. You can put it away so you can't access it. Then you have to simply do by law. It's not gonna be allowed this week. Shouldn't, uh. Not a cop.
Yeah, I mean, it's almost like my concern was, and then I knew. Being in this situation, we're like, almost like predicting we're gonna do a bylaw amendment in a month's time, at which point it's too late to get any more taxes. It's too late to change anything else other than draw from that reason.
So with that, with that money, the other option is make that available in capital reserves, if you can try to, if you can live. If it's not required, it doesn't get spent, it's all over the next year. That way you don't have to do by law.
Yeah, but we should put it into the budget now, that's what, that's what I'm suggesting. That's not what we should be doing. But anyway, we can all run over this.
So I'd like to interject. I know one thing for sure, is that we're gonna need nine hundred to redo the highway project, the highway project. Whether that's the one that we do this year for the water saving, for the revision contingency needs, I don't know, but we're all gonna have to do it. So. I am gonna be coming to you for nine hundred. Um, for the highway front, that's been in there for, for a long time. Will we do it this year, though?
So what would be a reasonable figure to set aside to not have you crying in your pillow every, for this year? Nine hundred. For this year.
For this year. That's not for P R V, there. Could be, it could be for that, uh, and if we don't use it for a water saving division project this year. We will need it next, will be, I'll be refreshed.
Uh, you've got Pride Trail, seventy thousand, was that Pride Trail that we did for the fifty, or is this an, in addition?
Uh, that should be long gone, that, that was a hundred percent funded.
That was, that was, we did. Oh. Um, did we hear anything back on, on the jetty? And you were gonna reach out to the transline, I mean.
I have not voted. You know, if they're not bad, there's bad. Can't you feel? Well, uh, again, to the chair, I, I had to talk into the, the wood plumbing people on that one. Um. They are gonna take a little.
Take a bit of convincing, you said.
But can I just say on, on the jetty, um. So there's, there's an indeterminate possibility there, um. I would still say this needs to be part of the beach park project, I'd like to see that removed. From, uh, being a, a funding item at a hundred percent tax per dollars. As, as, as part of bringing the, uh, revisiting the, the beach park project.
Well. A need for me to state that, I agree with that, because I've said it before, but anyway. Um. My other question is, the connector project. I don't believe we have any idea of what we intend to do for the connector project.
The, um, task force put forward their recommendations. Council hasn't commented on, and. Uh, I think our staff, C E O has reached out, as has, uh, Carl Burr, the translink, so to get some clarity on whether. The, uh, task force, number one recommendation was the jetty. Number two was, I think, Pride Trail or the connector. And so, uh, either council's gotta. Panther that around and decide whether we want to put a committee together or take the recommendation, uh, or staff can comment.
Well, can I just comment on that? Uh, since we haven't discussed it. Um, I would be adverse to budgeting a hundred thousand dollars on something we haven't even discussed, we. Uh, I don't, I don't see why that's in here.
Okay, so that brings up a question, we've got a, we've got a, uh. Four hundred and thirty thousand dollar project sitting there that's seventy five percent funded. And you're suggesting that we should remove that because, uh, council or staff have not been able to. Uh, actually address the situation, so we're talking about giving up seventy five percent. Of a grant that could. Fix our trail system in the village. of a grant that could fix our trail system in the village. Uh, and I would say that that's because council is afraid or not willing to get, get down and roll up your sleeves and, and address that.
I, I don't think this is about a trail system and, and we haven't had a discussion as to, uh, I mean, there's been a lot of talk about the connector project, maybe some connect, connection to a jetty. But, uh, the question is, why are we budgeting a hundred thousand dollars for a project that we haven't discussed?
Well, a trail system, if you read the connector project, the task force uh, led by Ronald Dwyer, it is the book trails. TransLink is willing to fund trails or bus shelters. And it's a matter of council looking at those recommendations and saying, the staff, staff, please follow up on them.
Sure, the question to us is budgeting right now, so, um, uh, what's, what's the expiry on this, on this grant? Do we know?
In the year.
Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you.
Your hand up.
I think I can advise and I've had some conversations with uh, West End Transit with regard to the location of bus stop at the bridge. It's on the bridge, the other side will intersect. Uh, so if there is a desire to, they are open to, to doing that. Uh, there would be some improvements necessary. If there's something that money would need to be, that aside for the purpose, so really we this we follow up.
So, and what, counsel, counsel, your hand up.
Yeah, the, uh, transit funding is, is not simply connected to buses. It's, it's to do with connectivity and walking bicycles and all forms of transportation. Um, one of the things that, that came up was, was a real desire for the people of Calvin Grove to have a, a better connection to the, to the top of Lions Bay Avenue. I think that's one of the things that we've, we've looked at. Um, certainly, uh, uh, access to the, to the ocean, um, and different, different, uh, suggestions have come up to do with that. We're looking to, uh, to offset the costs of the jetty through, um, judicial use of, of those funds. The original jetty project was, uh, more or less an improvement of the jetty and increased the, the, uh, ability of people to access the water with their water crafts and, and keep the water crafts away from, with their kayaks and, and SUVs and so on, away from the actual beach area. And, uh, the, the funding there was significantly less than, than ultimately it's, it's become evident that the jetty is, is an asset which is protecting our beachfront. And in terms of resilience and environmental resilience, the original, uh, uh, beach grant was in two thousand and nineteen. And since two thousand and nineteen, we've had significant damage to the jetty. So we've taken a, an item that was a more superficial, uh, repair and made a significant, made it, turned it into a significant, um, asset for the village to, uh, to protect the beach, beach park, protect, protect the, the sand and the, um, and the, the rock wall and none, none of which were connected to the beach park project originally. So that the, the scope of this thing has changed. And it's not, it's not a simple matter, but, uh, I think it's, it's absolutely essential that, um, we pursue with TransLink seventy five percent funding, uh, to do it, to, to, to improve our, our walkways, our access to the water, our access along the water, our access within the community. And, uh, you know, we're talking about creating a blue zone in this community uh, to, where people can age in place. And one of, one of the ways that that's happening is by giving people, uh, places to to, to destinations to get to and, uh, ways to get them there, uh, other than by.
Uh, Mr. Blackwell.
I can just give you guys a warning about this. Be cautious that you don't keep going over the same ground you covered. Well, this beach, this jetty issue has been at the council table time and time and time. You have until May fifteenth, it's coming very fast. So you guys are going to have to figure out how to navigate these things. Many of these things have been before you already, it should have been, should have been quick to go. Previous committee, the whole, the purpose of the night should not be re-prosecuting these items anymore in private counsel. If you do, you will not get a budget passed.
Okay, uh, Counselor.
Well, I was going to make one last comment, real moving to the next thing about the jetty and, uh, the transit grant. Um, so the jetty, twenty twenty one, Michael, this we got the grant, not twenty nineteen. Um, the jetty, I believe you and Marcus have since before the at the very minimum, the value of the jetty that was originally, understanding scope grew and has changed. At a very minimum, the original hundred thousand dollars allocated to the grant money, we should have stayed at least there so we can get that at twenty seven cents on a dollar. I've said that before, I'll say it again. As to the, as to the connector project, this council put that project on hold. Um, because, and I don't understand why we spent no money because we spent twenty thousand dollars unless the grant, the design fees are what, uh, grant and attributable, we spent close to twenty thousand dollars on the design. Didn't test, it didn't get tested with the public. Um, when it did, um, it was considerable pushback. Now we've got, you know, money's got bigger, there's four hundred thousand dollars sitting there. Um, and we have no other idea as to how we want to spend. We have no better idea than what we have before, as far as I'm concerned. So I, you and Marcus are concerned we're going there, um, you know, we can get a bus ticket in advance, but I will move on. Um, one other thing on this sheet that I just wanted to bring up, and, and maybe I did raise this before, but I want to raise it one more time is um, before we move is this furniture, which I believe may actually be, be wrecking, is attributed to the clay building. Um, why is it not part of the clay building renovation? I still don't understand that. No one's given me a realistic answer. Um, if it's, I believe it's actually meant to be wrecking as part of the renovation. So why is that twenty thousand dollars extra, why isn't in the clay building?
Okay, before we answer that question, I'll, I'll just follow up on Counselor Abbott's, uh, connector project. Uh, we in fact had a ninety day connector task force ran by Ronald Dwyer. There is recommendations made. They did review the previous plan, which money was spent on. And there was no desire to, to, uh, follow that initial plan. However, there is strong recommendation, which are based around connecting either traffic to the jetty, the ocean ultimately, and also, uh, Calvin Grove, connecting Calvin Grove with Lion Bay. And doing a better job of that through the Pride Trail or the, uh, uh, trail runs along the highway there. So I would, uh, suggest that, uh, of those in the gallery and counselors review that task force recommendation. Because they spent numerous meetings and get togethers. Mr. Burr.
We need direction from council. Um, council will not fund something without a plan. There is the best part, half a million dollars available, seventy five percent grant funded. We just need to be told what the designs, we can go to them and get it approved. We have nine months and we have lots of other things going on. So I would suggest that we're kind of out of time on this one already. The, the existing plan that we spent twenty seven thousand dollars on, that was put something in the public that we want fair enough. Um, a bus shop, even a bus shop there needs to be planned. You're probably a smart mission because it's actually on body land and it needs retaining on the outside. We can do it, we just need the right.
So then what you're saying is, is that, uh, council needs to give you a yay or a nay on the grant. And then I would suggest that if, if the, the recommendations go to the staff to decide how to deploy those funds. I don't think you're looking for council to start telling you how to, how to build a project, and, and I could be wrong on this. But you do have recommendations that staff and then the value. And I will say that the number two recommendation on that plan was this staircase, which has been boarded up for the last year, which is now a safety hazard for children walking around the corner of that block right here. So, you know, that is an eyesore, but more, more importantly, I think that's a stain on, on, on the staff and also us council not being able to make a decision to fix a staircase. Which in my opinion, if it was in my property, I'd have a four by four pounded into the ground out there and I'd fix that in an afternoon. But we can't get our heads together here as a group on how to fix a staircase. That's the number two item. So please review the connector recommendation from Ronald Dwyer and the group that was together at least half a dozen times and over a ninety day period.
Okay, can I just say something?
Yeah.
To put this to bed finally, is that, I think what Carl's reminding us is that we're behind the eight ball here in terms of timing on this. And what we're trying to do is prioritize, uh, project and, uh, that I, I don't see how the stairs are part of this, um, that there's very little time left. That we've got to decide, we've got a hundred thousand dollars, we're being asked to commit, uh, here. And the question is, do we, given where we are in terms of timing, is that a hundred thousand dollars that we want to commit to this, or do we want to commit that to other very pressing concerns? Roads, drainage, water, et cetera.
Okay, that would be my title. All right, uh, we're going to go to council project, but a real easy way is just to have a straw vote here. Show of hands on whether we want to kill this four hundred and thirty thousand. So then we don't waste anyone's time. Or we keep that at four hundred and thirty thousand there to fix pathways throughout this village and improve the village. So I'm, I'm open to that if you guys want to call a straw vote here or a, or a, uh, an official vote either kill us so we don't waste any time. Counselor Brown.
Okay, the we're, we're into a circular argument once again. We've had a suggestion that we, we not, um, spend, commit the hundred thousand dollars. And we're being asked to make a decision. And so this decision can't, can't lose the ability to make it, is it? So the, the fact is, is that, that we can get good value by committing a hundred thousand and looking at, at necessary and, and very, very important projects, including the staircase, potentially we can get seventy five percent of the staircase paid for, presumably because the eighty thousand dollar staircase over on, near the underpass was seventy five percent funded and, uh, generated a lot of interest at that time. Uh, so I would think that, that, that we're probably pretty, in pretty good shape to, to get, get this piece, we need this funded. So I would say that it's a very responsible decision to commit the hundred thousand and, and give staff the power to move forward. And God knows we need to be moving forward on a lot of.
Counselor Kama, before we.
I think we would be true if to give up seventy five percent of the grant funding.
Okay, all those in favor of keeping this connector project at least alive to, uh, better the village, uh, please show your hands and those against.
What, what is the connector project? We have no idea.
Well, we don't, we, we.
Let's move on.
Well, but no, we're at, we're calling a vote on this, so it's three, as I understand, we keep it alive. The connector project, visit the connector task force recommendations and you'll learn more about that. And then we should make a decision, or staff could make the decision. Number two, fix that staircase. And that's a safety concern, Mr. Blackwell.
I can confirm that that discussion around fixing that staircase has been going on for several months. And looking at various options from a trail to stairs, the reality hairpin trail so that somebody who has, uh, a greater accessibility all the way to fundamental things that we favor, if it's in progress, we expect to have it.
Okay, uh, let's move on.
We should, this part of the break. No, that's, no, that, that news. If I, if TransLink will not just hand over money, they, they want to see a plan on paper with a seal by engineer the last place. We don't have anything other than the one that was produced before. If council gives us the direction to go ahead and design this staircase, which by the way, it's happening already, um, they're ten days late on, on producing the design, um, and the cost. Um, if you tell me that's going to be the TransLink funding thing, that's right, because the design coming. The survey is, you may have noticed, the survey did. If you tell me to get a design for a bus shelter, I'll do that. If you tell me to get a design for trail from Calvin Grove to the thing, I'll do that. If you tell me to get a design for the jetty, which as you know, we have the consultant waiting on already.
You're asking if the micromanage is what you're asking. To deploy the funds.
I can only, I can only do one.
Okay, and what I'm hearing though is next council meeting, we have to take a look at that, re- report those recommendations and make some decisions. And so that you guys can move forward because you're basically staying your handcuffed right now, but.
Okay, I'm not saying I'm handcuffed, Mr. Mayor, so say, tell me what you want and I'll do it.
Just, or we'll see what can be done.
Okay, uh, Counselor Abbott.
Sorry, just, I mean, I think we all want to spend money as well. If we're going to vote, we can get for twenty five cents a dollar, of course, we all want to, this is stupid suggestion, any otherwise. Carl, are you suggesting we can only be one project?
Each one next to design and each one.
No, no, but, but could we chip away this in the four different projects if you get more done by the end of the year?
I, I have no idea what TransLink students.
Okay, I talked to TransLink, they said you can split it up into, this is, I, I mean, I, I did this a year ago. And I, and I, and I've mentioned it to council. I've talked to them in the TransLink offices and I've talked to their staff. They said, we want you to utilize that money. We are very flexible. Look at our websites, they do artwork, they do path, they specialize in pathways. They said, give us a plan, I agree with you, Mr. Burr. We need to come with at least a plan, like there's the staircase, here's the jetty, here's whatever the project. Come with a plan, get their approval. But they want to help us out. They don't want us to not achieve these goals, so. Could, you know, let's, let's make that decision at the next council meeting.
Picking up on the CEO's, uh, comment, um, I think it's, it's the, the staircases need to be built very, very shortly. We, we should, I think they should be expedited. I think it's become a real embarrassment and it certainly is a topic of discussion in the community. Why is it boarded off and why has it been boarded off for a year? Doesn't seem like rocket science that it can be built. I, I understand the frustration and the, the, the lack of direction that's been here. So I think we need to then, we need to.
Mr. Blackwell.
The only decision the council needs to concern about with is what's in the budget for council's formal, council's decision making? But what is not the merits of this scenario and that scenario? You will get bogged down and will never be able to.
Three to two has just been voted on to deploy those funds. But if you need something else at the next council meeting, we'll check that off.
It clearly wasn't a thing to do vote, and I'm voting against it anyway, I just want to.
I, I, a show of hands was Counselor Kama, Counselor Brown, myself, and I did not see your hand for the name. I.
Can I ask a, a different question moving on?
We're just trying to make a decision here so we can move on. So I think it was, it's a straw vote, if you want to call it, it's like a formal vote. Counselor Ryder.
The fifty thousand on the security system, um, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. Uh, I've raised this before, where the, the bits, um, on installing this, it just seems far too expensive. I, I can't imagine it costing this much. Um, I, we've talked about it before. Have there, is there some material for us to base this fifty thousand dollar app on?
Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. So that is an estimate of what it might cost us, that estimate, uh, is a bit of a placeholder, maybe us more than that. Work with a provider to nail that price. That number comes from previous project that I worked on, utilizing one of that. Those common service providers that are out there, so those are, that is a real number. Uh, it seems that commercial applications will be considerably different than the original. But, uh, as we say, there's no, we, I've been put this, it's a placeholder. If it's not enough, then we'll come back to council. If it's too much, it doesn't get spent.
Well, I, I mean, it's a placeholder, um, and you've mentioned this before, that a commercial project, it's more, I mean, you can buy all kinds of security stuff. I've installed it at another place, uh, I, I just see it as being excessive. And, uh, I mean, if, if it does end up costing that, then I suppose we could revisit it at that time, I'd be for removing that. I'd just like to point out one other thing, the village office renovation for a thousand, that one I thought was quite interesting. Whoever's managing an office renovation for a thousand and getting it done, we should probably have them managing all kinds of projects, couldn't we? I mean, that's a, that's a really nice.
Okay, just one last thing on this page, because I guess you need a new one. Um, directed to Carl, so this recycling depot, two additional recycle bins, this is mislabeled. We discussed it before, this is mislabeled from my report. Um, that we started off as an old report, but they were going to, they want to use some of the recycling money for digital recycling bins. That's all done and in the past and taken care of. And I think we left this in because you suggested it would be some infrastructure you might need. If we do this recycling thing, be it a shed or something that, right? So if we can just mislabel. So if we can just mislabel, take off that mislabel, just call it recycling depot. Capex and utility tank room, this will be agreed, right? Okay.
Yeah, so sure, Paul, over to you then. Um, all right, uh, just for Perry, can we move forward for the water contingency, which is there for a hundred thousand dollars, is it, um, uh? By the twenty that we back to nine hundred thousand dollars in there.
I think we need it.
And it was deferred in the last meeting, and now, yeah, put it back in.
I think we should put it in budget for it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a tough pill to swallow, and it's gonna, you're not gonna be able to.
So this is for the the tank and the P R Vs?
Well, it's it's gonna be for. What is it needed this year or next year? I don't know, do you want to fund it this year, seriously, quick? Um, if we do need some sort of contingency spend, and I laid out what those might be. Uh, then I'm gonna have to come back to you for that for that money, uh, then of course, there'll be an option to change the tax final. So it'll have to either be a bank loan or come up with a certain.
Okay, my comment would be, um, with with that top trouble executing on protests. Um, to to have this contingency just sitting there with the expectation that uh we're gonna be able to uh jump to this project and. And we haven't even been able to build that staircase up the back for the last year. Um, I almost think it's a little premature, that's my opinion, but.
I feel, I've always felt we should be spending on the water projects as a priority, I think we should budget for it now, because it's not this year, it's next year. Um, and that gives a more real realistic look at what's coming down the pipe, if you budgeted for now.
Hey, others, Counselor Kama.
I think my comment would be that if we think it's. Not reasonable that we'll actually use the money this year, if we're looking at a potential nine percent. Property tax increase and increasing that for nine hundred thousand dollars. And not use it, it would be a softer blow, so perhaps defer next year. Or maybe next year, we're not gonna land at six percent, and would be hopeful, maybe a little bit higher than that, but. At least we're not looking at twelve percent this year.
Okay, Counselor Brown.
I I just, we have to complete some projects, I think we've got quite a few projects in in the works. And we need to demonstrate that we can bring them in, um, you know, in the timely way and within budget and and uh. So I just don't, I I don't see, um, putting this in the budget at this point, I think we can. Push it up to next year at this point.
Mr. Blackwell.
This is a tip of the recommendation when Lander. Stay in the garden, don't worry about whether staff can deliver projects or don't deliver projects, you don't need to worry about that, he's pointing the directive. It's up to staff, that's very big, your best decision making, efficacy lies.
Okay, so we're asking whether we keep to put this back in the budget or defer, I I would go for deferral. Uh, what are the others at table?
What would like? Just to be clear, again, we we are going to have spends on water. Uh, whether it's, wh- what what whatever the particulars are, and uh, I I think we need to make that a priority and budget for it. And not have it come as a surprise.
Okay, so you'd like to keep it, put it back in?
Yes, Counselor Abbott would like to put it back in, Counselor Kama.
I have a question for Joe, if we added another eight hundred thousand dollars to the proposed budget. What do you think our taxation for this year realistically would be?
We can text, we can text nine and okay, no, it's not the suggestion.
Yeah, it's, um, uh, what would be, it would be included uh in the five-year plan, if I may. As an increase in capital expenditures, an estimate for this current year. Uh, and then it'll be offset by potentially either drop in reserves, or if it actually gets done, um, we've got, um. We potentially uh pursue a loan, but it's, you can, you'd fund for the interest on a loan through taxation, but.
But not the project.
No, we we can't pay for that. Okay, okay, uh, those who are deferring it, uh, raise your hand. Those in favor of putting it in the budget that you're, call that back, those for a deferral, put up your hands. Okay, those putting it in the budget this year?
I think, yes.
Yes.
A realistic.
Okay.
Really good idea.
Next item.
I have. One more on that page, one last question, so I know we all agree to defer the the pH water adjustment. Um, I do know there's some passion at the infrastructure committee, um, to take care of this, um. My suggestion is to be at least fund a nominal amount to confirm how we would do it. Get a design, get some pricing in this year, so at least we could do it next year. And I don't know if that, that's fifteen or twenty, it sounds like it could be something very simple.
Well, if you ask me through the chair, um, it it is a simple project, um, I'm actually hoping to get it done on the side. By current uh resources, particularly engineers and or our new friend, the the Metro, uh, Greater Bangor Water District. So I don't actually think that we need to budget anything for the design at the good. Depending on who you talk to, you're talking about a silo with dry soda act, conveyor belt system and augers and dosers. Or you're talking about a pump on a drum in particular, so between those two extremes, one of which costs million, one of which costs thirty-nine, um. I don't know where we are yet, we've got quite a bit of research to do before we need to spend any design lead.
Okay, that's fine, so you're saying the fifty thousand I've been deferred is not necessary?
It can stay deferred, we may very well need it, but okay, not this year.
Okay.
But just for comment, but I aim to, well, next year, this time, we're budgeting to do something not.
Okay.
Take that to the committee, we'll call the future.
Um, so returning to page five, I just a reminder, uh, the capital question for. Uh, for the water contingency, uh, second line, will be moved back to the current capital project. One item uh that has came in this is the um discussion of a uh. Oh, uh, emergency water emergency reserve fund. Um, so the uh uh drought uh emergency planning committee has been meeting on regular basis every Wednesday to discuss. Uh, resourcing in the event of a uh complete, um, uh, absence of water in the village. Um, so there are uh uh fairly high certainty based on, Mr. Burr has reported that. By August, we have a lot of water in the village. Um, so there are certain items that we can pre-plan for and pre-reserve uh to uh address this issue. Um, so the um request from the committee is, we have a reserve to draw upon, such that we wouldn't have to go back to. The uh committee, uh, or to the council, uh, we approve, um, expenditures and on an emergency basis. Um, if two hundred thousand dollars has been requested to put into the department for, um, uh, budget plan. Uh, uh, to build a reserve, or establish a reserve for a water emergency, um. We are compiling a list of specific requests from each department, E O T, yes, uh, fire, um. And this is uh essentially a reserve fire. To us, uh, being able to apply for and get emergency funding from the government, which is, yeah, reimbursed, um, in case. Um, if Mr. Blackwell would elaborate a bit further.
Thank you, Chair. So, for the two two points, there are some, there's two sort of financial components, one is the pre-planning. Then there are the mixed kind of financial components, kind of developed itself, as he alluded to in the event itself. Uh, we can replay money on for any spend, so if we had to acquire water, for instance. Uh, we could get reimbursed from turn, but we need to acquire supplies in order to be able to store water. So this pre-planning budget, as it, that is, as we refer to the drought emergency fund. Will allow, for instance, the acquisition of a used water tank. Uh, that can be utilized by a fire department, should there be no water in the mains. If there, if there aren't, isn't water in the mains, the only water the cap is in the, in water truck. Which is likely insufficient relative to the counter, according to the fire chief. So having a water tender will give us greater security, there are limitations besides the water tender. Uh, can only be single axle and yada yada, which means biggest capacity we could look at is two thousand gallon tank. But that coupled with some strategically placed reservoirs around the community would stand us in good stead and avoid. Hopefully avoiding potential impacts with regard to problem, how almost that's. So that's just one example, and probably the biggest ticket item, uh, of some of the acquisitions that need to be considered. So that the village is prepared, in the worst case scenario, it could have happened, it may not. But should it happen, that we run out of water, no water in the mains. We might still have to continue, so we need to make the plans, and are making plans now to make that happen. There are, as they say, acquisitions necessary to ensure that we can be resilient with the face on a scenario. Uh, Mr. Burr has the number light as well, I think he has a little less than you. For two thousand water tanks and various.
Yeah, so just to be clear, you, we, committee of, you look, we talk, the committee of staff.
So you're suggesting to add the two hundred back in?
Yeah, I mean, um, and it hadn't personally been included, this is a recent development, and so it's been new item, it's been put on. The purchase that it hasn't been discussed or agreed, so the proposal is to put it on to the grid. Okay, all those in favor? So, Mr. Blackwell, you had your hand up. Just gonna add a little footnote to it. Okay, uh, Counselor.
Uh, I do something actually, I just, I noticed we still got the fire truck in the defense, a million B fifty. And I noticed that in the operational budget under fire, yes, it is, and you have the fifty thousand we were talking about. Um, putting forward this year, we're going to do it, and year to try and build up some sort of fact. Is that the, is that the correct place for it to be, as a, as a operating cost? Should it not be a budgeted fund that we fund each year at topics, the fifty?
Yeah, um, so uh, putting it in the in the operational budget, um, I, it's a. Going to have, we're we're gonna have operations and all of that fun, so I'm gonna consider our property tax increases. Um, when you look at, what kind of piece department budget, well, we, this amount of our corporate tax injury is balanced on. Um, with with respect to like putting it to the capital expenditures, and sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't. Um, it's a, I think this is a little more, like, a more clarity on exactly what we're talking in to budget and what we're talking for on operational side.
Okay, so, yeah, uh, so we say we're gonna text for the, it'll be you.
Yeah, correct. Okay, good, um, uh, the next page I'll um go to is page six. Um, I didn't want to spend a lot of time here, this is present a summary of, um, you, uh, five-year plan capital expenditures. Um, twenty twenty-four, we spent some time discussing, um, I will update that twenty twenty-four for our seventh month today. Um, as that's previously, um, on how I like to manage your black well, uh, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight. Um, no, it's the an estimate of when uh these projects could occur and what priority they have. Um, it will be revisited each year based on uh where our tuition is, what our capability is to live in this project. Um, uh, projects are consistent with uh current five-year plan. Um, the uh, for previous, there's only one thing that's uh kind of been isolated, so that uh it doesn't create a lot of confusion, you know. Uh, by the time, what the capital expenditures is that, so there are some uh few, again, uh, brand dependent products. Um, we'll see that in common called brand dependence, um, these are large uh infrastructure projects, primarily with regards to water and drainage. Um, uh. There, speaking there as a placeholder, it's recognized that these projects are required and exist. However, um, uh, we will need preventive support or federal support to, um. Execute uh or fund these projects, so it's just a reminder, um, we're not going to keep putting in the five-year plan as.
Roger, wouldn't the cap project also, wouldn't that also be on the same list? You got the dirt project and the ocean do range.
Which one?
Oh, sorry, sorry, that's a different color. Uh, you've got a red one, okay, it is there. Center bay, you place it up there, sorry, it is in the, was it just between the the red and the orange, I guess, just the risk.
Yeah, it's at the top there, um, high priority, red, medium.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and. So that, uh, in my hearing for the questions, that twenty twenty-four, I believe, potentially, uh, uh. Discussion, definitely again, and uh, uh, comes from the vote into. Potentially approving the council, so I'll be the twenty-four. That's what I've on. Um, on page seven, um, I just provided supplemental to council, um, or to the committee, the whole, just a, a further. Further description for for the the larger projects there, and the five-year plan, so that to refresh your memory. Uh, you can have a understanding of what's there, but again, that's that, um, these projects will. Move from year to year depending on what we're having, finance, capability. Is that the only uh station we're like, is that the nine hundred that we just put back in? Uh, on page seven, the nine hundred thousand dollars that we put back in for the water contingency, the P R V is a separate project?
No, the P R V could be, the one could be, we're not sure if it's gonna be the P R V, or if it's actually pipe and dig up the road, and one of the big B, yes. So, I guess we just. Yeah.
So I do have a line item that was scheduled for twenty twenty-six, but there are replacement replacements. Um, and for that nine hundred thousand, meaning orange, and if floor placement of three, four, and five. If we perform, including work, they give the compliance and got automation, that was a separate item on the five-year plan.
Who's the other P R Vs?
Yeah. Different number than the plan class. Yeah, let's not.
We look, remember, eight P R Vs still in place?
Yes, true.
Yeah. Yeah, so about eight to go, we're not getting eight for nine and okay, but.
No, three hundred thousand each, yeah, so that's three of them, it's eight, I guess.
And when you're doing the engineer, you're looking at whether they're above ground or below ground. And uh, but like the tank one and kind of the hidden one, so it's not probably as critical, whether it's below ground, but some of these other. Uh, you'll be reviewing whether the.
Yeah, and and the design, uh, with that, given the indemnities is exactly that, uh, highway tanks, uh, we may even be able to. Utilize the fairly new P R V two that's there now, and just build one more stage, and that will save us three hundred thousand. But all the rest of them are intended to be upgraded. Um, chaos, with fully opening windows and staircase down to meet, to meet work at the plant, but not. Above ground. Uh, yes, it's the answer.
But if we do have any of the ones like that, and we'll put or something, we'll just.
Yeah, for example, just a couple, may have noticed, there are three leading from the the town view gate. Down to front of the beach, they can be above ground, they're they're, they're not in. Part of how, um, and if that is a kind of housing area, there's a chance.
Uh, okay, Chair. Um, if any of it any further for you today, uh, there was one question from Counselor Brown regarding the bylaw. Um, budget, uh, and there was, for some reason, the note page wasn't included in the package. So on table I have, uh, I will provide the notes package, the question primarily was. Why did the budget go up twenty percent in the current versus last year, and the answer is that. Uh, previously, um, parking lot were caught, yeah, were being included in the, what the public works budget. Um, and uh, practically reflected in the bylaws. Um, and, uh, practically reflected in bylaws. And that's really part related, so, um, it's that increase of the work budget, uh, cost and it's enough work, it was zero effect on the overall budget. We just, you, you are still in the funding. Um, other than that, um.
Any questions on that, Council Row?
Um, I'm, I'm studying some real challenges with the, the bylaw budget in, in its entirety. Um, I'm looking at, at a map, at a projected budget for next year of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Which is somewhere in the neighborhood of. Fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars a month. In bylaw expense. Thank you. Um, I, I just think we've, we've got to have a really serious look. At, at our bylaw costs. In terms of the fact that, that, uh. Um. I mean fifteen thousand dollars, close to fifteen thousand dollars a month. Is, it just seems incredible, uh, in, in terms of. What are we doing? How, how has it grown? It started, uh, you know, COVID to kick things off. But, um, we have then. Uh, continued to increase, you know, spending month, year over year from there. And I just think we need to step back and have a really good look. Um, you know, I, I think we've, we've attempted to get, um. Uh, a really good analysis of, of what the bylaw costs are, what the parking implications are, what. What, what are we trying to accomplish here? Um, we've got some really, really significant challenges around, uh, collection of fines, which the fines are, are quite high, which. Made sense during COVID, but have, should those have rolled back to make them more collectible? The, there's, to, to my mind, there just needs to be a really significant, uh, look. At, at the, the spot, the bylaw funding. Um, we're saying there's a twenty-two percent increase, but, but actually, last year, the, the budget was, uh, for twenty twenty-three was a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. The actual, um, spent budget. Um, based on, on the fact that, that, uh, as, as was understood, the, the bylaw officer was to work from March until October, I believe. The previous year, they did work through the winter, but as of last year, uh, I believe the, uh, bylaw officer worked until, till October only. So there was, we dropped the cost down to a hundred and nineteen thousand. For the year, again, at, you know, averaged over ten thousand dollars a month. And, uh, if we look at the increase from a hundred and nineteen thousand up to a hundred and seventy-three thousand. That's a forty-five percent increase in, in costs of bylaw enforcement. Um, they've had a parking committee that's, that's been looking at parking and, and certainly bylaws. Is spends a lot of time on parking, but, uh, we, we really need, we haven't had a, a report out. A real analysis of, of, of what impacts, we're hoping that there was kind of an unclear thing about, um. Want to rebook it at bylaw enforcement, uh, to, to assist in the parking, parking issue, but, uh, you know, I think we. Whether we, we need to form a committee there or some way look at this, but to my mind, um, you know. That's, uh, we're working at, on, on a. On a five-day-a-week basis, we're, we're paying seven hundred and twenty-two dollars a day for bylaw enforcement. And I just, I mean, to me, that's just, it's mind-blowing. So I, I, I just think we, we really need to look very seriously at. At some, some of our expenditures. I'm completely supportive of, of getting, getting money to our water issues. Getting money to, to other, other kinds of things, and, and the way I think we need to do that. Is by looking very, very carefully at our existing expenditures now and seeing any opportunities that we can. To ensure that, that the funds, um, go towards. It's, you know, our essential services to the greatest extent possible. While maintaining a real, really fulsome lovely community that we all chose to move to. But, um, I, I'm just, you know, there, there's a few things that are jumping out. There's another item. I later speak to a little bit later, but right now, I just think we need to reexamine. Uh, commitment to a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to buy.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, does this include collecting fees of, uh, you know, where he spends a lot of time? Uh, eighteen after some, does that include those?
Um, it's about a good adjudication with, uh, the, you have a, I don't think you were, we talked to you as well. Um, they're not. Significantly variable, uh, generally. Um, I just wanted to point of clarity for, uh, Council Rowton, uh, so the main. In that increase thirty percent budget, uh, thirty-one thousand is the twenty-five thousand dollars for material supplies and equipment. And, and note two, um, it is referenced, uh, so it was twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, in, uh, uh, cost for, uh, parking meter, software and meter cost. It was. That we incurred and included in public works, it was included in public works, so you brought from public works over to parking, which it should be.
Yeah, to give you a bit of a more clear idea, idea of what's costing?
Yes, okay. Well, which I really appreciate the clarity, which, which amplifies my point. That while we had some hidden costs in parking in, in bylaw enforcement, we now have, have those more, more clearly delineated. So which I appreciate. So, so, so my point is that, um. Seven days a week. If we had, if we had bylaw enforcement, seven days a week, it would be costing us five hundred dollars a day. Five days a week for the year would be costing us seven hundred and twenty-two dollars a day. I just, we just need to, to reexamine that. And the funds that are saved there need to be reallocated to, um, to some of the other priority items that we have.
About there.
Um, we asked this question before, so. This budget. Does or does not represent the full-time bylaw officer council approved in a resolution a few months ago? Budget still, still reads here, um, says one full-time to temporary seasonal office. So this budget incorporates council's new resolution, correct?
Yeah, it does, uh, it includes basically, uh, what it costs was, uh, from, uh, last year to this year. Uh, how we structure that between a full-time and, uh, seasonal officers, it's still that structure is kind of what we're working with, but we're trying to keep cost.
All right, so there's, with all time will be there, it's a slightly a season. Okay, um, sorry.
Sorry, Council.
Uh, I'm more than one question, you can answer that one first.
I, I wasn't gonna answer that. I was just gonna point out, there's an important distinction here. That ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of the bylaw enforcement work is not by law enforcement. You have parking enforcers, so there may be value in creating a bit of a distinction.
I was going to that next.
Yeah.
Okay, my, my other point was if we track this and we've seen it before, and the revenue generated by parking. This is a business center that generates net revenue for the village of significant amount. And yes, it all started with COVID. We didn't, we didn't create the additional issues carried by COVID. This is part of the way to fix it with all additional hikers, but it end up generating revenue. We go back to where we were in twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, um, we would have less bylaw enforcement, we'd have a lot less revenue. But the hike is ongoing away, so in my opinion, we may as well keep policing them and making money out of them because we can't get rid of them, right?
Okay, can I just ask a question? Because I have asked this before, uh. For a cost benefit analysis of this parking, and that includes staff time because. Uh, Mr. Blackwell, you told me how disruptive this is. But we still have not seen a cost benefit now. Is that something we can pull together so that we can? We can evaluate this a little clearer? Mr. Black?
Thank you. I think it's critical. Uh, certainly it's a revenue center, um, is that what council wants to run the community by? Uh, and enforcement, penal defiant, and, and, and costs, they're, I would say. It doesn't look good on the community. Uh, if the, if the goal is instead to sort of manage the volume of traffic, there's totally a different sort of messaging. The reality is the cost of ticket, a hundred and fifty-five dollar per ticket. Means that almost everyone that gets the tickets going to contest it. So there's a huge following of contested tickets.
Sorry, Ross, you said almost everyone, what percentage contests the ticket? At least it's, it's not almost everyone.
A vast number, thank you. Can we do that analysis?
Yeah, that would be. I recall Pam, like, I was blown away by the amount of people that actually paid their. It was significant, the guy. And the, the. If we don't have, we needed a fine that was going to send a message. Or we have people parking in front of fire hydrants and blocking people's driveways, and frankly, they don't care. So every other community has parking fees and fines, and if you walk off. The Safeway lot or the Fresh Street Market lot, you're getting a hundred and forty-five dollar ticket minimum. And they are, they will chase you down and shake you down.
Back to, we need to see the, the analysis of it, and that includes, you know, uh, Marina's time and the disruption in that, because. You may be exactly right, maybe we keep charging the same or we make some adjustments, but unless we actually have that. For four, that's being with Blackwell.
So what I would finish with is that's upon the work list. But there's so many pressing priorities. That it's, there's vastly more work to be done than I even ever hoped to get here. So this is a priority, but which of the other projects gets put down in order to do this?
So one component of this, which we haven't seen in the last for several times. Is we used to get a report from bylaw, done by the bylaw officer, actually, I've only seen it once, said we used to. We always, we hardly, we didn't get it very often, but we did get it. The, the reported, what happened in the previous year, that portion of it. Not getting, it's not the same cost benefit analysis kids asked before, at least that portion of it can give us some idea of what, of what's working, what's not. Um, is that, is that report being produced now?
Let's black out through the chair.
And the parking committee needs that one.
If I may, um, so it hasn't, a portion of that information is included in the annual report. Um, and, uh, we have data that we can just, um, report for, uh, our bylaw officer. Worked on, they would never take it. You have, you look at it with better. Um, that they can, uh, create a whole capital, we get an informal report and then, uh.
Okay. Mr. Blackwell, anything else?
No.
Back to you.
Sure, Tom. Um. So, uh, I don't have anything further over you at the moment, um, outside of, uh. At the end of the open conference meeting, a few events through the platform related to HR priorities. Um, and one other thing that we didn't, for the. Uh, but if, uh, if you made some purposes and what.
Okay, any, any further comments?
Page twelve, I guess. Uh, the cloud emergency building, it's just four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, so that's actually four ninety-nine?
Uh, for page twelve, that is, um. Um, look at page four. Is that four ninety-nine less spent or forty thousand dollars? It goes four thirty-nine.
Well, it's less, less spent.
Yeah.
I see, okay, thank you, that's helpful. Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Councilor?
Okay.
Council.
Um, actually, it's been giving you a second to find it, so maybe.
And, uh, Councilor?
Yeah, just to circle back to the, uh. What was discussed at the beginning of the, uh, the audit cost. So the audit, which should have cost taxpayers around forty thousand, um, we've still got the sixty-four thousand dollar figure in there. Um, you'd revealed, uh, some months ago would likely cost a hundred and twenty. You'd also mentioned on, uh, on our November twenty-first meeting that the cost overrun are largely down to the finance committee minute taking problems. So the question is, as this is still an ongoing process, um. Would a reasonable person be far off the mark, considering that this is still ongoing, including that we're above a hundred and twenty? Would a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty be something that would be potentially accurate?
Okay, I, I would just, um, I'll go to Counselor, uh, or sorry, the Mr. Blackwell, but before we go there. I think that's ridiculous to say that the finance committee's minute taking has moved the audit cost from forty-five thousand roughly. To a hundred and twenty, that would be the most ridiculous statement. And I, and I think that would be misleading, so I would not, uh, endorse that whatsoever. Mr. Blackwell?
Thank you, uh, so I would strongly recommend that we don't speculate the cost. And just again, to remind the council, the purpose of this meeting is to be. To decide, to decide what's on the table and what's off relative to the twenty twenty-four budget. And then it's council meeting where you will then have to.
Of like, and, and I'm gonna follow up one more thing. And, and I'll, I'll say this to the whole community. You take a look at the dysfunction of this council and the amount that we've had to reach out to the provincial advisor. And that'll give you an indication of where these extra costs are. And then with those extra costs that Council Reuter has, has identified. I have asked specifically for staff to go back and ask for detailed invoices on that and to review that and to push back. So. The dysfunction of this council. We all get to work in this table, at this table.
This, I, I, I would suggest you heed CEO's advice and stop speculating, because now, now we're going, all going down that path.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, just one comment, the, 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 uh, the, the news that is down to the finance committee's inability. And incompetence with their minutes was revealed in the November twenty-first, that's pretty clear.
Uh. Council Row?
Uh, uh, but that comment is so absurd as to be. Laughable, I, I just apologize, I, I'm speechless. Um, I would ask the facts come to this table. I, I spent a considerable period of the last meeting, which I actually apologize community for. Because it was embarrassing to have to be, to keep calling point of order on false information being brought to the table. And I'm, I'm shocked that I'm having to do it again. This table deserves the truth. Thank you.
Mr. Blackwell?
Thank you, uh, you know, I hate to say that, but you have a. Local procedures by law and it states very clearly. What is considered appropriate and inappropriate is council's bylaw with regard to spoken word, physical and other gestures. It's to be respectful, and that's not what I'm hearing, so you want me to be a referee on this? There's your referee's answer, you guys are way offside with regard to honoring your procedure by law.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell. Okay, is there any other questions or comments before we move on and we'll move into, uh, the.
Apologize if, if that was part of my behavior was incorporated in that.
Okay, so if there are no further questions.
I have a question regarding the budget.
Okay, Council Row?
Yeah. Okay, uh, that could refer to page. Sixteen of forty-six. And as, as I said earlier in the meeting, I, I, I just think that. Yeah, previous council did recommend an ongoing ten percent. Infrastructure levy. And this council has the opportunity to review that year over year. And that we are continuing to do that so that there is a ten percent infrastructure levy built into. The, the, uh, our, our, our tax base. If we look at a, a six, six percent tax increase and a nine percent tax increase, the difference between those generates. A, if, about fifty-three thousand dollars. If we increase our taxes nine percent a year. Then, over an eight-year period, our taxes will double. It's called the rule of seventy-two, it's an mathematical content. If we increase our taxes six percent year over year, then it will take twelve years for our taxes to double. And so, you know, there's, there's a significant impact on, on taxes. Of, you know, you, you, yes, yes, we put it, put it, our tax rate up one year, but then the next year we then put. We put six percent on top of the nine percent increase and, and there, it becomes a, a steamroller effect. So I just am, am very concerned about just saying, well, others in, in our community, in our, in our area, we have seven, eight, nine percent, nine point five percent. And I, I don't have an answer as to, uh, how, how the other communities are involving the, the ten percent, whether they have a. An infrastructure levy or. Whether they have a an infrastructure levy or or I'm being told, or you can't compare apples to apples. Well, uh, I I can. Try to best understand this and best explain this as best I can here. So my concern is, is that I believe that a six percent tax increase is a reasonable tax increase. And so I'm looking for fifty three thousand dollars basically. Um, to um, to o- offset that. And uh, and any money that that we we can save in in one area uh can either go towards our infrastructure. Or it can go towards um saving uh a tax increase to to a community who is currently facing. Uh, mortgage rate increases. Um, currently facing significant food cost increases and energy cost increases. And for us to shrug and say, well, yeah, everybody else is doing nine, let's do nine. I I just don't. I I I I just feel that's we're we're not uh being totally responsible in that. So I'm looking through the budget and I'm seeing fifteen thousand dollars a month, close to fifteen thousand dollars a month for bylaw enforcement. And and I need to understand how effective that fifteen thousand dollars is. Whether we would, we could do an as as good a job or better job by reorganizing. And allocating ten thousand dollars a month, you know, something like that, in which case we would have saved. Um, fifty thousand dollars and save three, three percent of tax increase. If I look at the professional fees on page sixteen. Um. Yeah, page sixteen of forty six. We have um legal fees on the top of of twenty. Twenty twenty two, our legal fees were eighty one thousand dollars. Um. Going into uh contract services and minute taking, forty eight hundred dollars. Uh, auditing, while we've we've just been speaking about auditing, and I and I'd like to see those brought into line. Um, but we're looking at at fees in twenty twenty two. Of eighty one thousand dollars for legal fees in twenty twenty three, hundred and seven thousand dollars in legal fees. And rec- and um, the twenty twenty three, that's on a budget of eighty thousand, by the way. Um. And then in twenty twenty four, going with eighty thousand again. So but when I look carefully, we've got um one, one legal firm, older whole law. Which in twenty twenty two billed fifty two thousand, close to fifty three thousand dollars. In twenty twenty three billed close to forty six thousand dollars, so total of about ninety nine thousand dollars. On and and during that time, so if we look at um the eighty one thousand. Um. Legal fees in twenty twenty two. If we look at the fifty two thousand being removed from that, we have legal fees of something in the neighborhood of what, thirty thousand dollars? Okay, if we look at twenty twenty three. Have we removed the forty six thousand from a hundred and seven thousand? We have legal fees of approximating sixty sixty thousand dollars. And yet we're we're um. Looking at, and and also during twenty twenty three, we have three other lawyers involved. And and that's indicative of some challenges that that uh. That I'm not gonna take time to speak to right now, that certainly could. Um, so what I'm suggesting is that that we have a pretty have a a budget item of eighty thousand dollars for legal. And that I think that that's um unnecessarily high. And that uh with less obstruction, with greater cooperation and 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 we're, you know, working together, I think we could bring. Bring that our legal fees down significantly. So I would suggest that that if we were looking at, say, a fifty thousand dollar. Item for legal fees, that would be, I mean, that would be a two percent budget savings right there. Okay, so.
Counselor.
My overall point is is that I I think. And 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 a point that I made a year ago was that that we need to be looking at. At our overall costs. And to just say, well, that's what we spent last year, so you know, it's put on five percent, six percent or whatever. You know, we have, we have new staff, we have new council, we have um.
Okay, I'll ask you. So we can go there.
I'm gonna go by five minutes, thank you. Okay, anyway, I I just would recommend that that uh the legal fee. Be asked to be.
Counselor.
Um, my only comment is now maybe you can help direct Black. Did that ten percent infrastructure levy was put in place based upon recommendations? In order for all, remember we had the presentation. All communities are need a math infrastructure master plan and a savings plan in order to qualify for grant. So without that, we could be in jeopardy of not. Actually being able to qualify, so I don't know if that's something that can be confirmed like that, but.
Yeah.
No, so what what was was, okay, in order to apply for grants, you have to start demonstrating doing asset management.
That's.
So we did it. Original asset management plan and another asset management plan. We were told we still have more than once. Whenever they submitted a grant, when they pointed out the infrastructure maybe that we taxed for any year. And made that question really answer and really easy to answer, and then moved on to the next one. Without that, um, that that part of what are you doing about managing your as your asset management would be really difficult to do on a grant. So yeah, it probably is one of those things that we need to keep if you want to keep applying for that.
All right, that's in line with the animal's uh same policy, I believe, dating back like ten years. And they've been willing to share that asset management plan. Mr. Blackwell, if you want to reach out to them, they've they've been quite keen on that thing program.
Well, we have an asset management plan, we have two versions of it, um, the question is, are we gonna go to the next stage? Which we haven't suited quite store.
That's black.
Yeah, you know, he hears this sort of the conundrum of small communities. The sort of the class section of work is not too dissimilar than the larger communities. They only differences, we have far fewer staff at work, so. Uh, we. How serious what I'm aware of. But I'm sure many turn around with half an hour and. Take care of themselves as an investment. All these are absolutely couldn't agree more, so it's just about where we find time to sleep, and there's so many competing priorities. And it's good news in all. Coaching. We can keep finding decision. And so you can help her focus and peril countless problems.
We should, sorry, final comments before we.
Okay, um. I have a final comment, um, so on that, um. Uh, the wonderful way high levels of government do with, was they gave us a grant to do the first one. And then once you get down to track them, they, okay, now you're on your own, so that's how that comes about. And then spend it, um, just comments on 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 Council Brown's comments there about. Um, being frugal and assessing our costs. Much, I'm surprised to be focused on bylaw, by the way, because it's a profit generator, but but on the other ones, um. Everyone in this council, on this council, I remember when they ran in the last election, we're talking about. Re- in reviewing how where our money gets spent. Confirming statements like, are we right sized? Do we have the right people? And to be honest, we've done none of that. Not a bit. We added an extra half a staff person. When I brought this up before, I was watching the bloods of the head from the C O, yeah, we should be doing that. But we haven't got to, and we haven't done it, and our budget has actually just gone up. And this increased, we haven't had that done that critical review. Um, I know in certain areas, we know, you know, so for what we see in anecdotal, probably works for the man down, we may also work with the one person based. And they spent it in other places. Um, but we've never done that critical review, something we all said we were gonna do in a year and a half in. Maybe we should get around to it. But it's not just about, you know, legal fees, they're already fees. Um, and and bylaw, there's a there's a lot more to it.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to say that those were two that jumped, I'm not saying that those are the only two, certainly. But there certainly were two that jumped out and and there were significant numbers and they suddenly and and. They they created a uh. An ability to keep keep our tax tax level, even for for the the long term reasons that I wanted to point out. Okay.
Okay, and just to build on Counselor Abbott's uh comments, we are going to facilitate concurrently with council and with the goal of. Uh, landing on strategic planning, so um. There is hope ahead and uh and that was initiated by staff and Mr. Blackwell, so thank you for that. Okay, any other comments before we allow public participation? No, okay. Uh, we'll go right to uh public participation. Uh, anyone in the gallery like to comment? Or have a question? No, okay, anyone online or?
Yeah, we have Casey Dyer.
Okay, uh, please uh unmute and ask your question, Ms. Dyer.
I I don't have a question. I just thought you might like some feedback about your sound quality. Um, I know that there is a policy that it's counselors only who sit at the table. But uh, when you have your two staff members in the audience, it's really hard to hear them. Um, speaking from the audience, the the mic system doesn't quite. Uh. Do the job, so I'm just letting you know that um. Uh, in the past, when um, when the C O was sitting at the table and when um. When the public works manager joined you at the table, their voices come through much more clearly with your new system. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
So, okay, with that, uh, we'll move to adjourn the meeting, uh, the open portion and Mr. Blackwell.
I was gonna say, yeah, just.
Okay, uh, we'll do in the closed uh motion.
Do we have a number?
C.
Twenty one C.
For nine one C, do we have a second? Okay, we have a second second, uh, all in favor?
Yes.
Vote. Motion carried. Okay, thank you to the gallery.
Yeah.